Hi, Your Honor. My name is Deborah White. I am a resident of Hazlet and I live less than 25 feet from where JCPN L plans to put these power lines. I am not being paid to be here tonight and I have not been paid to walk the miles visiting hundreds of houses to inform my fellow Hazlet residents about this project. My husband Mark and I moved to Hazlet in 1998. This is the only house we have ever owned. We moved to Hazlet because my husband travels to work and our home is convenient to the airport shuttle. My husband is in the Czech Republic tonight and he is watching us here. Oh, God. We have a great neighborhood and we are really happy where we live. This is where we plan to grow old together. My home may be one of the closest homes to the edge of the right way along the Tanmar Route. To be sure, I got out of 25 mile, 25-foot measuring tape today and went from my fence to my house and I did not need to use the whole reel. It was less than 25 feet, 24 feet, 3 inches to be exact. If JCPN L can construct the transmission line, I could end up with a 10-foot diameter, 150-foot monopole directly behind my home. The sheer size of the monopole overwhelmed my home and property. I cannot screen it with a higher fence. Hazlet only allows a 6-foot high fence and I cannot plant a natural screen because JCPN L actively manages a vegetation program where pruning to 3 feet above ground is their policy on the right-of-way and pruning all vegetation that approaches the right-of-way from private property that could fall onto the transmission line will be pruned or removed. I would be stuck with a pole that is 1/4 of the size of my 40-foot long house. Hazlet is the most densely populated of the five towns impacted. Hazlet has more homes than above the prude per mile than any other town. Nearly all properties in Hazlet are between 1/4 and 1/2 acre in size. The majority are around 1/4 acre lot size. The size of the poles will overwhelm our community. The poles will be visible from Route 35, which is 1/4 mile away, Route 36, which is the northern, the more northern state highway through Hazlet, which is at least 3/4 of the mile from the planned route. The poles will be visible for miles along the Garden State Parkway. JCPN L has not applied nor been granted approval from the Holy Roots since their project crosses their properties. New Jersey turned by authority for access to cross the Parkway. U.S. Department of Navy to cross Normandy Road and join Navy railroad tracks used by Naval Weapons Station Earl to connect the main depot base with the supply area of Harrow Bay. And lastly, New Jersey Transit for access to their north Jersey coast right-of-way. Your Honor, I am asking that you come to my house and see for yourself in person what a devastating impact this would have on my family. I also request that you toured the entire proposed roof to better understand the voice of the residents. I am formally asking... I am formally asking that you deny JCPN L's application for MCRK. Thank you.
Robert Spinelli. Robert Spinelli. S.P.I.N.E.L.I. I live in Hazlet. I have no facts. I have no figures. I have no facts. I have no figures. I've been trying to get a little more personal. I've lived here for eight years. I originally came from Brooklyn, New York. Tried to get a home in Brooklyn with a backyard, a dog, and a barbecue. It's not possible. I'm not hipster. I have no long beard. I don't make that much money. I can't afford Brooklyn. I decided to come to Hazlet to get that. I have that right now in Hazlet. I have a barbecue. I have my dog. I have my backyard. I don't think it's fair that JCPN L will come and take it away from me. I'm trying to live the American dream. I'm not a millionaire. I want my barbecue, my dog, and my backyard. And I want my power lines. So, let go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Scott Goldsberry from Hazlet. I am 159 feet from the proposed line and I have not been paid to be here. My wife did do a fabulous job just speaking, so it would be very, very hard shoes to fill. But I did, would like to say, just on behalf of the thousands of kids that play at the Hazlet Youth Athletic League sitting over here, that they come. We share the parking lot with New Jersey Transit. We are simply right underneath these proposed power lines. And whatever they say, I'm not going to bore you with, you know, all the facts and whatnot. I think everybody has really kind of done a fabulous job in presenting that today. But I don't want to be wrong in that situation. So, you know, our kids, again, are in this all day, every day, and I'd ask that we look beyond the money grab of this, the idea that big company can come in, wield the mighty wallet, even convince our not-so-fine governor not to choose his side. So, I would ask that you step up and say no. Recommend a no. This is our town's. This is what we do, and this is where our kids come and play. So, on behalf of HYAL, I want to adamantly say that we oppose this, this project. Thank you for your time.
My name is Dina Marie Deliberto. That's D as in David, E apostrophe capital, L, I, B as in boy, E R T O. And I oppose JCPN L's Monmouth County Reliability Project. I want to first state for the record that I'm speaking today as a private citizen and not on behalf of any organization or group that I'm affiliated with. I'm a resident of Hazlet Township and I've been a resident there for 20 years. I live 524 feet where, uh, 524 feet from where the JCPN L plans to put these power lines, and I am not being paid to be here tonight. I'd like to submit for the record my complete written statement, which I put in the box, and this Google Earth map, which shows the location of my home, the Beer Street School, and where the HYAL athletic fields are. I submitted photographs in my written statement, which actually shows that in some cases the road would have to be eliminated in order for them to put the poles in. I'm extremely concerned about the potential health risks, but that's only the beginning. Many people have spoken on that, so I will not repeat everything that's been said on that. Also, that has been said before, the proposed route is unprecedented, and I think that that should be taken into consideration. But I'd really be remiss if I did not mention my concern about the impact on the property JCPN L claims there won't be any loss in property value, but since I had plans on selling my home prior to this project, a real estate agent advised me of losses between 10% to 30%, depending on the home's proximity to those lines. The average home value in Hazlet is 347,000, and in 2010, there were 7,417 housing units. If only 3,000 of these housing units lost just 10% of their value, the total estimate loss in property values on the low side would be slightly more than $104 million, and that's just for Hazlet alone. Is JCPN L going to compensate homeowners for the loss in property values? And what about the insurance increases? I just want to go back in history. A long time ago, in the Midwest, the railroads were coming in and taking people's property without paying them fair market value. I thought those days were over. So, how can JCPN L take our land, take away our quality of life, without being paid fair market value? I happen to be legally blind, and I mention that because I chose to move to Hazlet because I wanted a good quality of life, but I also needed to be living near public transportation. Now that this project is on the table, if I have to move to protect my health from all the health risks associated with this project, where would I be able to live? Where would I be able to live in a decent neighborhood that I could afford after losing 10% to 30% of my home value? Please... Please consider the disabled when you make your decision. Please consider the senior citizens who've worked their entire lives and all that they have to lose. And please consider our children, who are going to grow up potentially having cancer and all the related diseases. I ask you this question. We all go to sleep at night and we put locks on our doors, and we all have smoke detectors in our home. Is it because we believe that our house is going to get broken into or that our house is going to burn down? Or is it more the case that we just want to prevent it from happening? I urge you to take preventive courses to prevent any harm from being done. In conclusion, I implore you to carefully weigh and consider all the reasons and concerns I have addressed in opposition to this project before making your recommendation to the BPU and then only after you personally come and imbue the proposed route. I invite you to come to my home. I invite you to come to Hazlet and look for yourself what's at stake for the millions of residents that live here.
Honorable Judge Cookson, my name is John Lalanas. L.A.L.A.N.A.S. Apologies for the poor handwriting. And I'm a resident of Middletown. My wife and I live 323 feet from where the JCPN L plans to construct the power lines. I am not being paid to be here, and I have opposed the Monmouth County Reliability Project. My wife Kristen, then fiance, and I purchased our home in Middletown three years ago. It's a beautiful historic property near the Village section of Middletown and borders New Jersey Transit right-of-way. We love the property so much that we admittedly decided that this would be the place where we would have our wedding. And we did just that. We bought the house, and last October 1st, Kristen and I got married on our front porch in front of our family and friends and held our wedding reception on our front lawn. Buying a home is the biggest investment that most people will ever make in their lives. When we purchased our property, we were obviously aware that the train was there and discussed it as a potential concern. After visiting the property several times, we decided that because of the natural landscape between our house and the tracks, the train was barely noticeable. And in fact, there are only a couple of trains an hour that run by during most parts of the day. Based on the proposed project, most, if not all, the trees and vegetation that provide that natural barrier on our property and many other properties in the communities adjacent to the tracks will be removed and replaced with 100- to 210-foot steel monopoles and high-voltage transmission lines. This will completely and forever change the landscape of our property and these communities. We've read in the petition that JCPN L has filed with the BPU that the properties adjacent to the transit right-of-way have already diminished in value due to the fact that it's an active railway and that construction of the monopoles and power lines will not create any additional increase in value. I truly find that hard to believe. If this proposed transmission line... If this proposed transmission line existed at the time we purchased our home or had we known that this project was being contemplated, I feel confident in saying that we would not have purchased this property due to the unappealing aesthetics created by the pole zone lines and, more importantly, due to the conclusive or perceived health risks associated with electromagnetic fields that are created by high-power transmission lines. Therefore, I think it's very reasonable to conclude that the addition of the power lines would almost certainly cause a significant reduction in the values of properties adjacent to in the proximity of the proposed route. This decrease in value of people's homes will have a dramatic impact on all residents, especially ones that were planning to use the equity in their home for retirement, funding college educations, or providing long-term medical care for their families. If this project goes through as proposed, the communities will lose hundreds of millions of dollars in property value. Kristen and I will lose all of the equity in our home that we have worked very hard for and will potentially render our house unsaleable for any reasonable price. It is truly unfair that we have to barely cost this project. Judge Cookson. Judge Cookson, I thank you for holding the second public hearing and for allowing all of us to tell you our story on how this proposed project will impact our lives and our communities. I would ask that you please consider visiting the areas that this project will impact so that you will see firsthand how this will negatively affect all of us before making your decision. Thank you.
How do you follow up that? My name is Keith Giversen. This is my wife Danielle, my daughter Jillian. We live in the Apple Farm neighborhood in Middletown. Don't have much to say. You guys have heard the statistics. You've heard our community's stance on this. We want to thank you for coming for a second time. Really do appreciate it. A little emotional about this. It's for my daughter. She goes to Village, which is 400... New Village! Which is about 400 feet from these proposed power lines. We're about 2015 feet from the power lines, so our life is going to be inundated with these, uh, these monopoles of doom. But, uh, basically, I just want to say, we are not this community, these five towns, we are not JCPN L's bailout. We are not their annual bonus. This is nonsense, and it has to stop. That's all I got to say.
Hi. Just so you know also, I signed up independently, but I'm just joining under his five minutes. Again, Tom Daniel Giversen, as we indicated. Our daughter attends Village within, uh, under 500, and I'm within 2015. You know, as a mother, the one thing that you focus on in life is to protect your child, and you will do everything in your power to protect your child. And having this proposal of having these transmission lines and having the potential health risk, child leukemia. My father had leukemia. It was horrible. It was to watch an adult suffer. Thank goodness, he's remission, 10 years. I couldn't be happier. But that's an adult. He was strong. These are children. I don't want to see my child or any of her friends or any of the other children or parents or people who I don't even know sitting in this room to be, um, to have these potential health risks from having such lines. And the other thing, talking to my friends and other neighborhoods and hearing tonight, the destruction and what's going to happen to their properties and to their lives, I pray that this is not approved and know that we oppose this project and we are not paid to be here tonight. So, thank you for your time.
And I think that we should not get monster power lines because I love and care about my family, pets, teachers, and all my friends, and I do not want to lose any of them, including my fantastic home that I love and will take my best care of it.
Your Honor, thank you for this opportunity. I was one of the hundreds of people who could not get into the first event, and I appreciate your being here tonight. My written statement was submitted to you way back when, when this first started, and I had a few comments that I was going to make tonight, but I got it a few things down. First of all, I am so proud to be a member of the Rage community. The time and the effort that's being put in by the people who are here this evening is incredible. I also am so impressed, as I'm sure you are, by the thoughtful and intelligent comments that have been made prior to my speaking tonight. It's a lot of, lot of work and a lot of research that has been done, and I can't imagine you don't appreciate it. I'm not being paid to be here tonight, but it's costing us money. We're all donating to a cause. And this group is being funded by parents, not parent companies. What I really wanted to come to say was based on the aesthetics of this project. My parents bought a home on Village Land in Middletown Village in 1953. I grew up in it, and I now still live in it. We have a brook that runs behind the house, open space. I can tell you what papers the individuals are reading on the train during the winter as they go by. It's that close. I looked last night at where the poles are going to be located, and I'm going to have a pole basically right in the line of sight. Just a quick aside. 27 years ago, I was divorced. I had moved back in with my mom, who had Alzheimer's, and I met a young lady from Jersey City, and I brought her down, and she fell in love with my backyard. Not me, my backyard. She tells everyone to this day that she meets, that she's in love with my backyard. If this project comes to fruition and she leaves me for a better backyard, it's on you guys. Thank you.
Good evening, Your Honor. My name is Ken, K.I.N., as in Nancy, last name is G.E. I'm here to speak out against JCPN L's Monmouth County Reliability Project. As one of the latest speakers, it's kind of tough. You know that you heard a lot, a lot of comments, a lot of facts, a lot of emotional talks from the heart, so I'm not even going to try to top that. But I would like to do is say a few comments that maybe summarize a little bit, but also I know the tough decision you had before you judged. The petition you have in front of you is to remedy a contingent technical violation for an event that is considered possible but not likely. And we fully appreciate and understand that there is a technical reliability violation that needs to be addressed. However, you really should keep in mind that this event only happened twice in the last 20 years and for loss of power of less than $10. So, JCPN L chose to build a new transmission line as a quote-unquote "solution." And in the spectrum of all these fixes, this solution is the most invasive, most detrimental to the communities affected. This violation is not a capacity issue, and the proposed solution will not help us with storm-related allergies. You heard a lot of comments about the financial incentive that's offered under the Federal Energy Act. One of the things you haven't heard about is that Federal Energy Regulatory Commission also allows an approach called Formular Rate Approach. And with this approach, a new higher transmission rate could be charged by simply filling in higher charges on a spreadsheet formula. Well, guess what? JCPN L filed a change to this Formular Rate Approach last October 2016, and under that filing, the transmission charges for all ratepayers effective 2017, if this is approved, will represent a 54% increase in transmission charges. Now, you heard a lot of comments about a lot of things, so I'm not going to repeat them. What I'd like to do is make sure you understand, this project represents a triple whammy to the communities affected. Triple whammy. First of all, transmission charges would have to go up to pay for the project, and the price tag right now is $111 million. It started at $22 million, went to $75, and quickly went up to $111, and the project hadn't even started. So, transmission charges will have to be increased to pay for the project. This is not an investment by JCPN L. This is a project paid for by the ratepayers. Second... Sorry. That's on top of the proposed 54% increase in transmission charges for 2017. Second, you heard from a number of speakers, there is property value devaluation or destruction, as I like to call it. We know for a fact that there's already a $100 million destruction. Just the perception of the fact that there's a power line being built, it has already affected many homeowners who are trying to sell their homes. Third, due to the reduced assessed value, towns are going to have to increase their property tax rate to make up for the loss in tax revenue. So, that's going to affect all residents, not just those who are living 200 feet, 500 feet, and whatever. So, all this will serve to severely impact the economy of Monmouth County. The decision before you is whether this project is reasonably necessary for the service, welfare, and convenience of the public. I think you heard a lot of speakers where that service of the public is questionable. This is, again, not a capacity issue. This will not help us with storms. This is for a contingent violation, and they picked the worst solution. Welfare and convenience, that's something you need to consider. You heard a lot of public comments, both on January 25th and tonight, and that's one of the things that we implore you, we urge you, to take that into consideration. I won't bore you with any more comments because there are a lot of people willing to speak, so I'm going to end it here. We appreciate your time. Thank you for the opportunity.
My name is Joe Curdo. I am a resident of Middletown, and I am opposed to this project. I live 70 feet from where JCPN L plans to put these power lines, and I am not being paid to be here today. There are two sides to every story. In favor of this project, you have JCPN L, who has the most to gain financially since they have, they will receive a high rate of return on this transmission line project, and the cost of this project will be paid by us, the consumer. You have the unions, who look for job security. By the way, they do a great job responding to our many blackouts caused by the poor condition of our distribution lines. The New Jersey Chamber of Commerce, with James Fackhold, president and CEO of JCPN L, being on their board of directors. He had the New Jersey Alliance speak last time, who was misinformed and believes that the Monmouth County Reliability Project would have prevented the pizza man from losing power during superstorm sanding. And you have some misinformed public, who JCPN L has successfully convinced by a tale of lies... of lies that this project is needed. Now, the other side of the story. Opposed to this project is every local politician. This includes mayors, freeholders, assemblymen, assemblywomen, congressmen and senators, representing not just the residents near the tracks and proposed transmission line, but all the residents in the affected communities. Opposed to this also are the local school boards, in fear of EMF exposure to the young students. Opposed is the Sierra Club, the local parks, and many other organizations who care about the environment because of many of the trees that will be cut down. Opposed to this project is the organization of Rage, who are educated in this matter and smart enough to know that without power of transmission lines, there would be no power to our homes. But also smart enough to know that there are alternatives to installing transmission lines within feet of thousands of homes and many schools, and there are alternative ways to correct any violation that may presently exist without destroying our communities. And finally, opposed to the project are the residents of Monmouth County, who purchase their homes with their life savings to raise a family in a good community, who, if the project goes through, will try to sell their home at a fraction of its worth if they are lucky enough to find a buyer. Those living within the fall zone will not be able to sell to a buyer who plans on getting an FHA mortgage, or any government insured mortgage. And come to think of it, it's interesting that the government would have a concern about issuing such a mortgage if there was no danger with these power lines. Some may not be able to sell their homes at all, and be forced to live in fear of getting known diseases associated with EMF, or will have to walk away from their homes for the safety of their family at a cost of financial disaster. We are not stupid people crying about nothing. We understand that without transmission lines, we would not have power to our homes. But transmission lines belong in open fields and along high-ranks, not in the backyard of residential communities and schools. Judge Cookson, I implore you to take a look at the area for yourself, to see what we are fighting for, before you make your final decision on this matter. I know you don't want to hear redundant comments. While it's smart to have some overlap, too much redundancy is a waste of your time. With that said, we have a transmission line and a redundant transmission line. We do not need a third redundant transmission line that will ruin our communities at great expense for all of its residents. 13 years ago, my wife and I bought our dream house at the end of a cul-de-sac along the railroad tracks. Little did I know, I would be spending my first year of retirement fighting to protect our community and the investment of our home. It amazes me, with so many politicians and residents against this project, this is still even being entertained at this point. Please stop the madness and reject this disgraceful project. Thank you.
Lazdewski, yes. Rex Lazdewski, L-A-Z-D-W-S-K-I. Our family owns property adjacent to the MCRP right-of-way and the railroad. Family has lived on the property at 12 Dorothy Court since pre-revolutionary days. Yes, the house was built in the 1600s and has been occupied by the same family ever The house has survived 300 years, but I fear it will become unusable if the MCRP is allowed to be constructed. The huge monopoles will not only be along the railroad, which is adjacent to the property, but the extension that will couple the Taylor Lane substation will put a pole on... An L-shaped pole around the house. They will be within the fall zone. They'll be less than 100 feet from where my son's family now lives with my grandson. I can't in good conscience allow them to remain in that house that will be overshadowed by these poles. My father owns property which is adjacent to what's called the Dayton Line, which is also JC P&amp;L right-of-way. It's in western Monmouth County. It's been there for over 50 years. During that time, they've revisited the property many times and have taken what was an unobtrusive set of four poles, and doubled the size, and quadrupled the amount of poles on the property. My father was going to rent the property to a farmer, and he was going to plant blueberries under the power lines. He did for one year. The blueberries under the power lines didn't grow. Let me say that again. The blueberries under the power lines did not grow. So what's being transmitted by these lines? And the ability of JC P&amp;L to possibly come back and make these monopoles bigger, or more of them? What kind of radiation is being transmitted? I fear that if they're allowed to build this, they might come back and want to expand their footprint, and also the Taylor Lane substation. I question the feasibility of using century-old technology to provide electrical services. Above-ground lines are subject to ice, wind, and other storm damage. Just recently, the New Jersey Rail System was shut down by a windstorm that broke electrical poles and put live wires over the railroad tracks. Hardly a statement for safety. Maintenance of the lines will be a large expenditure and could be alleviated by the use of newer technology. This is a massive building project, including cranes and even helicopters flying low over the houses. JC P&amp;L talks about reliability, yet the bulk of power outages did not seem to come from transmission lines, but local problems with transformers, tree limbs, ice, snow, and wind. I would ask that a record of power outages be submitted for your examination, and as someone said earlier, there were two power outages in 20 years caused by transmission lines. A simple tour of the area will show the condition of the lines already used by JC P&amp;L. Numerous poles look like they are ready to fall over. They've been patched up using cables. Some have ropes around them, sistered to another pole, and many other items show a lack of maintenance, or deferred maintenance, if you will. How can we allow a new project when they can't take care of what they already have? During the last power outage, which was during Sandy, the maintenance crews from out of the area came, and they complained that JC P&amp;L infrastructure was difficult to repair due to obsolete parts. Perhaps once again, they should concentrate on upgrading what they have. I ask you to deny JC P&amp;L's request to build this project, that it's a rehash of previously denied project, uses old technology, has an adverse effect on our residents, and has questionable benefits for Monmouth County residents. Our family will be especially impacted by the two sets of poles and wires due to their proximity to the Taylor Lane substation, and will basically make this property unusable after 300 years. Our family's namesake park, Dorset Park, is adjacent to the railroad right-of-way and will also be affected by this project. Is this a legacy we want to leave our children? Can we honestly say we need more power so our children have to play under the power lines? Though most of this building is going to be taken place by out-of-state contractors. I've watched the power lines go up-down in Ocean Township, and every truck that's down there is from Ohio. So the JC P&amp;L statement that this is going to increase jobs is false. Just this past week, a dead bald eagle was found on our property. Its cause of death has not been determined yet, but the agent that came, the fishing game agent that came, said if there were power lines there, that's probably the reason. And the power lines that are there now are the right-of-way power lines for the trains. If this project is built, which I'm sure Judge Cookson you'll deny, but if it were, I'd be glad to rent my house to any JC P&amp;L employee with a young child. Thank you.